Okay, we'll call the regular meeting of the school district of Belmont Clemmie together. The night I am replacing our current president and vice president. Because the vice president has to leave during the meeting and so there'll be some reasons for that. In any event, I call it to order to determine the quorum, we need to have the roll call, please.
Michelle Murphy. Here. Heather Ridgeway. Here. Sharon Barcema.
Here.
Gary Ursland.
Here.
Richmond Daniels. Ryan Meyer.
Here.
Jim Sutcliffe.
Listen, we have a quorum, we'll move on to, we have our, we're gonna open with our public hearing on the school calendar. Which means everybody's gonna have school in June. Is that what it's, did I miss that?
No.
You're not wrong for this hearing.
They're trying to keep it early.
Okay, we opened the public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak on the, on the school calendar tonight? If not, do we have any written or oral comments presented to the district or to our board secretary? Nothing? Public hearing is hereby closed, moving on. We welcome all of you who have come to ride tonight. You could be down at the concert, but you're here instead, I think that's wonderful that you're here. We welcome you and glad that you are. Any communications, anybody wants to speak to the board before we get into approval of our agenda? If not, I need a motion to approve our agenda, do we have that motion? Sharon, second. Okay, we got a motion in the second? All in favor, aye. Those nay. Motion is carried. Move on, need a motion on the consent agenda, please. If you've reviewed that carefully. Move, wait, second on the consent agenda. Got a second, okay, we got a motion and second. Discussion on the consent, on the consent agenda. Anything else? If not, all in favor, aye. Those nay. Moving on. Reports, student profiles, esports state champions and esports program. Whoa, what's this on here?
I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Leo Livingston, the coach of the Rainbow Six Siege esports team. Mr. Livingston, would you care to introduce your team?
Um, gentlemen. Unfortunately, a lot of our players tonight are also...
They're in the concert?
Yes, they're in the concert unfortunately, uh, so I was able to get some of my other players here. If you gentlemen would like to introduce yourselves and say your great little what kind of games, titles you play for esports?
Uh, my name is Brendan Wall, I'm a junior and I actually both Siege and Overwatch.
My name is Daniel Spencer, I'm a sophomore and I play Siege and Overwatch.
My name is David Byton, I'm a junior, I play Siege and Overwatch.
Um, so the three gentlemen here are part of my R16 that won the state title this year. This will be my third year coaching for Belmont Clemmie Esports Program. Each year we came a little bit closer to a state title. With last year us rapping in the runner-ups and this year us finally being able to take the state title.
Wow, that is huge!
Um, I think it's just really important for our team to just kinda talk about what they really take away from this program. Like what are some benefits they have for it, so I'll open it up if I can say, gentlemen?
I'll just open it by saying that my first year here, I moved from, I didn't like move locations. I moved schools from Humboldt almost solely for esports because Humboldt doesn't offer it. Um, I mean it's also a shorter drive, so, um, but immediately when I got here, I mean very accepting group of people. I mean they welcome you in right away, uh, really helped me, you know, make friends, uh, just kind of make my way into the school.
Well, welcome.
That's, that's really, we're glad you're here. Honestly, we truly are, that's good.
Uh, I think the most important part about esports program is you don't really have to be athletic. And to like actually play sports to be included in the league. Like you can be at home or whatever and do whatever you want, but you can come here and join, have friends and have fun. It's not all about winning really, that includes more people than just sports.
My case, it helps with those because I do like more sports, but being around esports team, uh, it makes me show that like, the people that play esports here feel like they actually have something that they're prideful for. Because they weren't accepted because they didn't play an actual sport, or let me say physical sports. But, yeah, so.
Uh, going off of what Xander just mentioned, I think the esports program has really done a great job of redeeming that gap between the athletes and non-athletes in our school. I can't say how many kids who aren't even on the esports program who come to watch their friends who are on esports team play. Not to mention so many of our esports players are also dual athletes. For example, these three gentlemen here have already been talking about that they're gonna be playing football next year. So, and during, football season happens during our R6 season, so we already, I've already been talking to them like saying, hey, we're gonna work around your schedule of football, that way you're gonna be doing both things. Like, I mean, it just shows that you can, we can be both athletes and esports athletes at the same time. And I'm more than happy to see these gentlemen go off on the football field as well as playing on the virtual court.
Wow.
That's great.
Um, are there any questions from the board for us? What's that? Oh yes, thank you. Also, as well as winning the state title, we also were able to win quite the grand prize from winning the state title. Trish, do you happen to have the laptop here by chance to, may we show that to the school board what the prizes were? Now, the one thing I like to say and point out is I'm not a very technical person. Fortunately, I have people like Trish, Grayden, Nate, Xander, I don't know what's on like. But, who are very technical and were able to explain to me just how much this equipment costs on sale. While Trish is bringing it up, could you talk a little bit about it?
Um, so, well, here it is, this is a, I believe Lenovo gaming laptop. I don't know the exact price, I think it's somewhere around $1,600. We got it for winning, uh, they also gave us two headsets, a keyboard. Uh, yeah, I, oh, are they giving us a monitor?
Uh, yes, it's coming, but it just hasn't been able to be doing it.
It's, we're also getting a monitor. It's really fancy, I mean like I have a computer at home and it's almost identical, like some lines with like an actual power PC, so.
So, as Trish mentioned, it's a shoutcast system for those who are familiar with esports. Basically, what we're reading that is, it's gonna be used as a thing for our players who are not playing the game to spectate the game that is currently playing and give commentary as if you were at a football game and commentator were specking, say, football game and saying what, what, giving the play-by-play. That is actually a big thing in esports currently at collegiate and professional level is people who do something called shoutcasting, which is commentating the game as it is played. And we have students who are actually very interested in doing that. I know, uh, Mr. Daniels was here today and we have one of our players. Oh, sure. Oh yeah, come on.
So, I'm Kate Nelson, my son Will Hayes is also on the R16. He's, uh, speaking of shoutcasting, he got to do that while they were down at State and work with the college hosts that were here and that were also shoutcasting at the same time. He's really excited about having this system and he's not necessarily one of our starters, so, or last year wasn't, he might be this coming year. So, while the top five were playing, he was able to speak and shoutcast and, um, learn from the more experienced college students. And, uh, he could see what it was all about and he's super excited to have this program and to be able to, when we are the home team, to be able to shoutcast while we're playing.
And this was a corporate sponsor that gave this product to us because, of course, the esports association really doesn't have any money for awards or anything like that. And it's very nice to have a laptop like that, although that's no trophy necessarily.
I think I'd rather have that.
Okay.
I think you're probably more excited about that than, than a piece of plastic, right?
On that note, um, I do know that our school, our school board admits, Dr. Fraser, have worked hard to present to you all one more thing besides the prize of the laptop.
This is the first trophy that I've been able to present since I've served on the school board here in Belmont.
And it's been a long time.
It's been a long time. And let me tell you, this is not plastic, okay?
That's no dance competition trophy.
This is really good. This is, this is a trophy for the ages, guys. State champs, I think that is really, really cool. So this is yours to put in, one, if you wanna, if you wanna take it home and kiss it a little while, but if you bring it back, we're gonna put it somewhere in, in, in the building, okay?
Alright.
And when you win the trophy for the football, then we'll give you enough.
They will win this again next year.
Yes, alright, and we'll get three! I'm, I'm pretty agile for my old age. Well, thank you all.
I wanna say, kind of as a parent too, like, we, sorry guys, but, as Xander mentioned, a lot of these kids are, don't necessarily feel accepted that play esports. And this has opened up so many opportunities for those sports pangs that don't necessarily fit in the round holes. And I just really appreciate that our school has allowed this program to thrive. And it really is thriving, I mean, it's not been around that long. And you see all sorts of kids playing it and I think that's just really great that we have that. And, you know, I talk to people from other towns and they, well, with you, you came in to play esports. So we may have lost some kids for other sports, but we're dating them for this.
And it is a quickly growing program, not just in our school, but all the nearby schools. Well, Clearing Goldfield Dallas, for example, is just now starting their own esports program. Clear Lake Grove has one this year, they just, we compete against Eagle Grove in two titles this year. And it's just amazing that all these nearby schools are growing. And eventually, my, our dream would be to, for these schools nearby, to be able to bring them here to compete with. Uh, we did actually do that for Super Smash Brothers. Austin, which the Smash coach unfortunately couldn't make it tonight. But he, for example, has actually taken the kids to nearby schools to compete against their schools at their tariff and invited them to come compete against us here in the title of Super Smash Brothers. Giving those kids a chance to just actually meet their opponents instead of just not being someone they meet on a virtual screen. Which I think is just really a great thing for the students.
One last comment I wanna make, and that is that we hear about you constantly at these board meetings. Trish tells us every time you guys make another level. And she's been keeping us abreast and we are so excited, excited about your success. And we honestly support that wholeheartedly, it's wonderful that we have this team and that we have this sport here in Belmont. So, thank you guys for participating and I hope it was a lot of fun, so you can really wanna do a better job next year.
I wanna say one more thing, like when I say it's, it involves everyone and like everyone that plays really, it's super nice. When we went to State, it was like a big rec center, so there was a bunch of basketball courts and Ben Montenegro, one of our players brought basketball and suited to shooting hoops. And actually, one of the teams we played against, we played basketball with them for almost three hours. Like we mixed teams, we were, we were having lots of fun laughing and everything. And after we, we played them and we beat them, but they didn't like to, like last year's state champs either because they're kind of annoying and mean. And, so, they, they were like, I had one of them on staff and he was like, let me know if you beat them, blah, blah, blah. And it was, and they just really were super nice and everyone's just nice entirely.
Doesn't make you feel good when you knock off those other dogs, though?
I love it, I love it. Well, I thank you all so much for your effort and especially for great success. It isn't often that you get a chance to be the best. And you guys were this year and I think that's really cool. So thanks for coming tonight, I appreciate it. Well, it, it can't get better than that, can it? Okay, uh, student profiles. Next we have a report on the culinary arts students and their, oh, they're, oh, they're charcuterie boards!
Charcuterie.
Charcuterie!
Charcuterie.
Okay, I know what they look like. I saw it sitting up here.
Basically, they're lunchables, but they don't call it that.
I made, I helped make this.
You did? What are you multitasking tonight?
Yeah, yeah, a little bit. So, um, we just have food class, um, we're just kinda doing different things. We were introduced to charcuterie board unit. And, um, so up here we have different sorts of cheeses, I know there's gold jack, gouda, uh, some other kinds of cheeses. There are two, I don't remember the names exactly, but really nice cheeses, all tasty. There's a big bunch of grapes up here, some olives, some dry roasted nuts, here's some chocolates.
Chocolates!
Yeah, there's chocolates.
You would like this, school board to file up by there as a buffet.
Go right ahead.
Ladies, would you care to lead us off?
Sure.
Show us the way. Hey, don't, if there's any of that blue cheese up there.
You don't wanna.
I do. I love blue cheese.
Do you really do, just like?
Oh, I do. One of my favorites. Are we following?
Yes, you're following.
Are you guys eating? What? Is that how you stay skinny? What is your problem? Aren't you eating? What? The kids made it, it's gotta be good.
I think it was like some kind of red cheese.
There were a lot of aged cheddars on the.
There was, there was.
Cheddar.
Oh! Look at those nuts. Look at the olives! I did eat supper, but that doesn't make me worse, I'm good. Yeah, look at, look at the red cheese!
I don't wanna break that, I don't wanna break that. Because I don't wanna break my heart.
The what? Flower.
The flower. The meat of the flower. I just said. Thank you!
You start with shark and then you're good, that's all I say. You start with shark.
I'm curious about these cheeses though.
I don't mind the rest, you guys, that's all your problems.
So how do you like the foods program, do you like it?
Well, I love the food program. I actually enjoy going to class every day, it's my favorite class to be in. Teacher of this month, really nice, real sweet. She gets on you if you don't do your job, but she's very nice, otherwise. Even if you give her a reason to be angry, she'll, other than that, she likes that. Yeah, there's a whole bunch of different things you can have, she, she has foods too. This class is pastries, but she doesn't really like to go out of the book, so she's just kind of, that's her own business. Which worked because, yes, we've had cheesecake and stuff too, she's turned up pretty good, made some cookies.
You guys made supper in the open house, right? Did they make supper in the open house?
Yes, they did, yes.
Did you guys help make this too?
Well, I, no, no. Not me.
It wouldn't be a board.
You can't mess this up!
I can't believe this. You guys never eat.
We're trying to book them. Boarding on, I take them to the waiting room.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that.
You know, of all the years that I've been on this school board, this is the first time we've had food.
Right. Now I'm trying to make it so easy every year. I should tell you, back in the day, every board meeting, we had food at the end of the meeting.
I'm surprised that you mean on it, but that's still not a thing.
The auditor got tipped because we were taking foodstuffs from the school and feeding the board.
Oh really? I bet your wife could make pie for us.
She might.
I brought cream on one night.
Yeah, I mean the, the whole people, the whole.
Oh, I brought in one of ours, yeah, that's.
He loves one of ours.
I think he wants one.
There was different things there.
I'll go get it for you.
Of course. Really, you sat down and had it?
It's gonna be the longest meeting I'm ever. When it ends, I'll let you.
Yeah, just go for it.
Well, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Always feel free to go up and get some.
Michelle, your turn.
Yeah. You need an extra piece of chocolate for me, Ryan. You picked a bad meeting to be gone.
You know what we need for school? A wine making class.
Yeah!
Oh, yeah. Can they present every Thursday?
That would go so well right there.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on.
What I can't understand you, your mouth was.
What did you say? Okay, we have the culinary arts, they don't have to report, they just bring food. Okay, school improvement. Oh, school culture. I see some folks here from the school culture program, there he is!
I got him.
You mean the screen, that's fine.
By the way, I always put way too much into presentations, I don't even know if I'm gonna get through all the slides. So if anybody has any questions, just let them know or comments or wanted any clarification on anything, it can be super informal.
If you get hungry midway through.
I might have to, except for I would talk just like Gary does. That wouldn't be the best. But, uh, what we're kind of working on here in terms of climate and culture, uh, I know that last year I presented on inspired leadership and we went a kind of different route this year. But it all starts with on the left-hand side up here. We kind of came together as a TLC and administration group during the summer and tried to just summarize what it is that we wanted in terms of our culture at Belmont Clemmie. And we kind of made it succinct, as succinct as possible. So we said that we wanted BK to be the best place to work and then we had kind of five points of what we felt made a school community a great place to work. So supporting and celebrating one another, seeking opportunities for improvement, seeking solutions, owning our mistakes and respecting the absence. So that's kind of been our focus this year, is those things. Um, and then with that, we have a specific company that we're going through called Top 20 Schools and a specific presenter named Willow Sweeney that we've been working with, kind of going in that direction there. So it's, it's been nice as a building to kind of come up with these five things. I think, I know in the future, one thing that we're talking about as TLC team is really to make those things a little bit more visible in the school and everything that we do. Because, uh, right now, I mean, we talk about it relatively often, but it'd be nice to just keep those things a little bit more visible. So we're kind of talking about how exactly we wanna do that, um, is what we've got going on. So, uh, with that being said, what specifically we've been doing regarding that, uh, is, it kind of is very similar to what we did last year with, uh, inspired leadership with energy levels, only it's kind of simplified in terms of, uh, Top 20 schools, their big thing is, there's this idea that you can be top 20 or bottom 80. You can live above the line, top 20 people live above the line, bottom 80 people live below the line. And the line is essentially just like this metaphoric line where when you're above the line, you're thinking, serving your best interest. When you're both below the line, your, your thinking is not serving your best interest and just being self-aware of when you're in those two modes. Is one of those things and that's something that kind of helps me out because there's definitely been some times in my life where I've been, uh, kind of below the line and I have done some things that I probably shouldn't have, uh, when I was below the line for sure. So, uh, that is all of that and it's really, again, it's kind of like inspired leadership. It's not to make people feel bad if they're below the line because being below the line is a human thing. It's just really being able to recognize that and then figuring out, okay, if I know that I'm below the line, what exactly do I do with that? And how can I get myself back above the line? Is kind of the whole idea behind those things. So there's been a whole bunch of in-depth topics and I won't necessarily go through all of them unless you all want me to go through all of them. But there's been some in-depth topics that we've gotten with that. So how this started was the TLC team, uh, and as well as administrators met with Willow Sweeney, uh, in, was that July, Dr. Fraser?
What?
August, I thought it was July, okay, yeah, in July, uh, in Minnesota. Kind of got her perspective on how she could help our school when it came to culture. We've had her back three times, one time at a pre-service, uh, one time in October and then another time in February. So we've had her kind of talking about these topics. And then also, uh, these top 20 teachers, uh, there's a handful of teachers that have these books. I have one of these books and we also have kind of a, like, school implementation plan-ish book, journal that we use, uh, at the junior, senior high relatively often. So that's kind of the, the nuts and bolts, if you will, of what exactly is going on with that. In terms of success, I would say that this has been, this has taken over a little bit more than what inspired leadership did last year and I actually have some data to support that. So one thing that we did ask, or I asked the junior, senior high teaching staff was kind of, okay, if these are all the five things that we said our desired state was, kind of where are we at on a scale of one to 10 here? And I did this probably two weeks ago-ish and these are kind of the numbers that we have. So it, it lets me know a couple of things, one, we're on the right track, but two, there's still some work to go. Because I would say that on average from like on a scale of one to 10, uh, with these things, we're anywhere from 6.4 to six on a scale of one to 10, which means that I, I don't know, coming back to like the teaching perspective, I guess 60% isn't, isn't perfect. But it's definitely shows that we're on the right track. And I do really think, one, one thing that I'm appreciative of, um, is kind of like a school leader, is, it's really nice to have these things, that these are the five things that we're really working towards. Just having that, I think, is super beneficial and now it's just, okay, how do we continue to grow in these areas? And I know that those are things like at TLC meetings, last TLC meeting we had, this was essentially, this was exactly what got brought up and these were the questions that were asked. Like, okay, if this is where we're at, this is our current reality, we're not where we want to be yet, so where do we go from here? That's where we're at kind of currently, uh, at the junior, senior high level. I also asked, just, I polled staff on, do we wanna continue our relationship with Willow and Top 20 schools next year? And, uh, I don't know why I didn't have a scale of one to 10, but this was actually a scale of one to five and the average score is 4.1 there. Which, if, if you just look at that, I, I also did the same thing last year when it came to inspired leadership. And our TLC and administration was at a 4.1 with that, but the rest of our teaching staff at the junior, senior high levels only have a 2.8. So if you, if you compare that to where we were last year in terms of inspired leadership, we're more bought in to Willow and Top 20 than we were at this point with inspired leadership last year, on the whole, is what I would say. And that's a promising sign, um, in terms of that. So we have been talking a little bit as a TLC staff, okay, now that we know these things, we're kind of year one in terms of getting to know Willow, what Top 20 schools are all about, where do we go from here? And with that being said, there's still some work to be done in terms of, and a lot of this has to do with like staff-to-staff relationship, whether it's just like your coworkers, um, that goes down to our support staff. I know pretty much all building personnel have been involved in Top 20 training, so that goes all the way from like our kitchen, uh, personnel to our para educators, bus drivers, all of that, custodial staff. So these are kind of the things that we, as a district, as a TLC team, kind of came up with, okay, where do we wanna go from here? One thing that we're talking about is how do we take these ideas to students? So we kind of have this idea of desired states for staff, but I don't know if we're necessarily all on the same page with exactly what we want our desired state for students to be. So how do we take these ideas that we're learning about as a staff and implement them with students? Like how do we teach that, how do we let students know what that's all about? We obviously wanna continue to improve our desired states, especially like how do we focus on this when Willow is not here? Because honestly, like Willow can only come in three times a year, she's not gonna come in and change us. Like she may give us ideas, but ultimately, we as a system are going to have to implement the ideas that she gives us, is what we've got there. And then, uh, a lot of times we're talking about, like, we have collaboration meetings on Thursdays and we talk sometimes about this. Okay, so I'm, I'm bottom 80, I know that I'm not in the right headspace right now. How do we, how can we survive when we're in that mode? Whether it be students, whether it be staff members, anything like that, and those are conversations that we have. So, with that being said, I kind of got long-winded there. My, my, my goal was, if I go all the way back to the beginning, I can go to any slide that you need here. It's kind of the, the four things on the right is kind of what I hoped you'd get out of this, but now I'm gonna kind of open it up to any questions that you all had. In regards to culture, climate, anything like that.
Do you feel like it's improved, like you from a you're here every day, you're in the building every day, do you feel like it has improved?
Yeah, I, I will say for sure, and I, I will say one, I'm gonna say this for example, the respecting the absent. There was one thing that we talked about and one of the first things that Willow brought up was this idea that like when people aren't in the room, essentially there's a two-thirds rule, that like, okay, if somebody's not in the room and you're gonna talk about somebody that's not in the room, you can only do two of the following three things. You can only say someone's name, if you say someone's name, uh, and say it to someone else, you can't say something negative. So for example, like, I can talk about Ryan, okay, to Lee, but I cannot talk negatively if I say his name. You know, that sort of thing? So, so, and I will honestly say that I have heard staff members say like, okay, I'm gonna honor the absence, so I'm not gonna go there right now, which is an important thing. I would say sometimes, does it still happen? Yes, it still happens. And one thing that we need to get better at is like, okay, if we see something happening that goes against kind of the desired state that we have, where do we go with that? But I would say that our desired state, like just having these things down and talking about these things, I think was improved. And then the fact that we like have a vision of knowing what it is that we want this place to be. And now it's just a matter of like working to get there. There's some bumps in the road, sure, and I would say just like in general, education is in a tough space, space right now, so I would say I don't know if you polled a lot of schools, I would say that their numbers would be relatively low. And that's not a BK problem, that's just like a social climate issue that we have for sure, but no, I, from my perspective, yeah, and what I would say here is like if you look at the data to have the data support that, I would say that like this shows that we're on the right track. And things are improved. Cause I, I would say this, when we did this the first time and I should have had it, it was slightly different questions, but when Willow came in the first time and asked these questions, our numbers were lower.
Do you feel like the elementary school is on the same track as the junior, senior high?
I would say that there's differences in the two, I don't necessarily work over there quite as much, but I would say that there's differences and I would say that like through the meetings that we have, there's a lot more like positive momentum for what we have here at the elementary than there was last year for sure. There, there's a lot more positive momentum that's going there.
And Justin, the
No doubt.
Teacher leaders at the elementary are reporting improvements, correct?
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Yeah, that, that, again, and, and just having two separate buildings sometimes is difficult that way too, because I mean you can have different cultural things going on between buildings, um, that goes on there, but yeah, I would say for sure through the conversations that we're having, I don't necessarily have the data to support that because the elementary hasn't necessarily come up with all of these, but I would say like anecdotally through conversation for sure, that it's on the right track. Yeah.
So you talk about the line.
Yep.
If you notice another staff member being below the line.
Yeah.
Do you approach him and see if you can help him?
See, that's a fantastic question. And I, like, and, 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 okay, so here's what I will say, is a lot of that just comes down to relationships and just the relationship that you have with staff members, there's certain staff members that I know. Like, okay, for example, I, I'm in a weird spot that I'm kind of like a go-between, I would say, in my role between like, I'm not a teacher, I'm not an admin, I'm kind of like involved in both of those processes that I sometimes get people that come to me. And the nice thing is like, I will have people come to me and say like, hey, I'm below the line. I'm like, alright, I get that, and like, what do you need from me right now? It's like, I just need like five minutes, I need to just get this off my chest, and I'm like, alright, I, I will listen. And then I know if that person just needs to get this off their chest, I don't necessarily need to do anything in that situation. Like, that person just needs to talk to me and they need to get that off, it's like, okay, how, how are you right now, like, okay, where do you go from here? I don't necessarily need to fix that. So, so that is a very good thing, I would say, and the hard part with a lot of this is the training isn't necessarily like, it's not like mental, mental health first aid in terms of if somebody comes to me below the line, what do I do? It's much more about you being able to identify that in yourself and then working from there. Which is, which is kind of a difficult thing, exactly, because we talked about this. Alright, we, we've talked about this at a staff meeting before, alright, we want to honor the absence, which means that we don't want to talk about people that are not in the line. Well, what happens if you're in a situation with somebody that's? Then, then it becomes one of those, okay, what do you do with that? You know, it's kind of like the law, the law is really good, but the hardest thing about the law is enforcing the law. It's kind of one of those things, like this is the desired state that we have, that is true, but like what can we do in situations when something is not being upheld? So I guess I, that didn't really answer your question, but that was like a roundabout way of answering that question, I didn't have a very specific way of doing that, so I apologize there.
Justin, I have a question.
What's up?
You mentioned something that was a challenge in my mind and I was sitting here thinking about it, and I'm thinking, if you've gone through this process with staff.
Yep.
And the next step is, how do we deal with this with, with students? Staff are obviously more mature.
Yep.
But also more stuck in their, in their ways.
Yeah.
Children are more amenable to teaching.
Amenable, yeah.
But, on the other hand, they also have greater ups and downs in their life than hopefully staff does.
Sure.
You know, emotionally.
Sure.
I think that's a huge challenge. To figure out how to do that, it would be a great opportunity and certainly a success story if that could be done. I'm just curious if you know how real that might be?
Oh, I think, and, and here's the thing about, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll go back to this. If we were talking about last year with inspired leaderships and seven energy levels and trying to explain this to students, this would be like, whoop. I, I would say to be honest with you, there's even staff members that said that that was a little bit over their heads. Like, I, I, that, that, that was just the way there, one thing that we've kind of talked about that we really like, and, and to be honest with you, this stuff, if there was a staff member that maybe bought into, I, I, I don't want to say that I bought into it the most, but I would say like I was probably in the top five percent of people that bought into this last year. So that's coming from that perspective, um, that even despite that, we still had, uh, that going on there. So what, what I would say is, I definitely think that it's possible. It's, it's just, it's breaking this down and honestly, a lot of this, and, and what I will say, Willow did a great job and I think that we could work with her, so this curriculum actually started as her in a classroom teaching this to her kids.
Wow.
So she's done this before, so that's what happened, and then this kind of like spun into its own, like she essentially took this on the road and then she was able to make money, so she got out of the classroom and did all that sort of stuff. But, like, I have a great relationship with Willow, like I have her number, she texts me, like, we could easily do something along those lines, where, where she would help us implement this sort of thing, because that, that's honestly the number one piece of feedback that I'm getting from staff members right now, and I know the elementary similarly, is, okay, we love this stuff, but how can we get this stuff out to kids? And she's done a great job, that she's done this with other schools, to show she has a good understanding of, she's seen other schools implement this, this is what to do, this is what not to do. And, and now it's just creating a system in which we can do that.
You, you know what's difficult about this is that it, it's not unapplicable as easily, I think, as somebody teaching something to students. It isn't one of the core subjects that we teach in BK.
Sure.
It is, it is behavioral
Sure.
modification by either staff and/or students.
Yeah.
And, and it's, it's learning how to deal with problems of life, I guess.
For sure, and like even more so than behavioral, it's prob, it's more emotional than anything, like, behaviors are a I, I don't know, from like a social perspective, like behaviors are a microcosm of the emotions that you're feeling more so than like behaviors themselves. So it's really getting to that point, absolutely. And, and she ha, I will say, like, she has books that it's Top Twenty students, she has books, it's Top Twenty parents, like, and, and we talked about this and, and and part of it is like, I'm sure Willow wouldn't even be upset if I said this, like, part of it is, like, to answer all of your questions is money, like, she has all of these things and she's willing to give it, but she does a really good job of saying like, hey, I will sell you whatever I want to sell you, but just so you know, you don't need to buy everything in order to implement all of this, which is nice. Um, that she has all of that, and, and really what it comes down to again is like, we have all of these ideas and all these ideas are great, but like Willow herself, she's not gonna come in here and teach this every single day. So ultimately, it's what do we do with this to create a system to implement this for students? So, so those are the conversations that we're having a lot, is, okay, what do those systems look like? We don't necessarily have those in place yet, but I know that we did talk, like Willow talked about, um, in other districts that she's done this with, the least effective way is essentially saying like, okay, every single teacher in the district is going to teach this, we're gonna give you fifteen kids and you're all gonna teach this to these fifteen kids. Because she just said like, when it comes to teaching social, emotional stuff, there are just some people that are comfortable doing that and feel very passionate about doing that and some that do not. And to be honest with you, if they don't feel that way, that teacher is probably great at doing things that they wouldn't, like I, for example, would be fine teaching all of this. There's other teachers that wouldn't, but I'm, that's not to say I'm a better teacher than them, because that other teacher would teach something like math, I don't put me in a math classroom, like I've tried to do that. I've tried to do that now or then, and I can do it for like a short period of time, but I could not do that for an extended period of time. You know, it's, it's, it's just those different things, so really it's, really the next question is, okay, if, if we want to do this, how do we build a system in which to do that in the most effective way for students? And, and to try to do it all, all the way through 학, so all kids get it, so we can have those common understandings. So then we can talk about when students have behavioral issues, then we can talk about, okay, this is the situation, clearly below the line, what's going on here, let's address the root cause of what's going on, rather than just trying to get the behavior to stop. So many times in school, we try to get behavior to stop, but like we don't necessarily address what's going on, so it's not a whole lot going on there.
You're successful with this with the staff. That will have a positive impact that it gets from students, they'll see it. When, when staff can get along and deal with their issues in a mature adult way and be on the same side and working together. Students see that.
Well, for sure.
Well, I think even, okay, so I have a very dramatic recruiter right now, and, um, she talks to the counselor Heather Lambert a lot. And if Heather did this with her, it, even the two-three thing, two-thirds, shut them out, like you can't talk, make something about someone if they're not here, like just having that knowledge, I feel like that's something that they can work towards and measure, so I think that'd be awesome.
So that's kind of the next steps and where we're at with all of that, is trying to figure out how do we, how do, in what way do we do that in a way? What ways can we create a system that does that in the most effective way?
And you have to have the staff already there to be able to teach it.
Oh, for sure, yeah, you, you know, e- exactly, exa- exactly, and that's, that's one thing that we're talking about is, and, and Willow, again, Willow said that, just to reiterate that point, is, it, it wouldn't necessarily be effective if just all staff members just blanketed it and everybody did that, it's gonna have to come from like a specific group of people, and how does that work in our current school environment and the systems that we have in place, for sure.
Well, I'm certainly pleased to hear that we've made it through.
Yeah, that's awesome.
That is awesome, that's a really big step.
I don't know, I'm, I'm sure that I've said this before and I'm just gonna reiterate it one more time, we have the right people that are here. I, I tru, I truly honestly believe that, that like the right people are in place. A lot of this comes down to like, we don't necessarily need certain people to do more, what we need is, we need to create systems that put our people in the best positions to succeed. Like from stu, from staff all the way down to students. And those are conversations that are ongoing, so. Which is fantastic and very exciting to have those.
Well, yeah, that sounds like you're picked up.
Justin always is.
I know he is. Most of it. Most of it.
But, other than that, appreciate you all.
Thank you, Justin.
Thanks, Justin.
Okay. Moving on, let's see. The superintendent's report.
Yes, and my apologies, this did not make our board books, while you have a paper copy of my report at your place, and it's a rather tiny report. Just to let you know, we, uh, we have a, an agreement on, uh, soccer uniforms. Uh, we are now, we're gonna be Wright County Soccer, that's what the uniforms are going to say, we're going to do, uh, kind of a Team USA look with, uh, BK blue and Clarian red. And, uh, because by rules, the goalies have to be a separate color, why then the goalies are gonna be in purple and gold regal dress, so.
Oh, right.
That's, that, that's our plan for this year. Uh, we, uh, the board is aware that we did a meet and confer with teacher association and we had a very productive meeting, and that's leading us into bargaining, which was supposed to be kicked off yesterday when the blizzard hit. And we're currently in the process of rescheduling that, still, we're going to be in the bargaining process, well into the bargaining process, well ahead of the last six years. So that's good news, and that's about my report, I'll let the rest of it stand in writing. Any quick questions before we move on? Next.
You're it.
Yeah. Miss Mance is at the concert.
She's at the concert.
Okay.
Yep, which is where she should be.
Yep.
Um, I have a few things, I, I did want to say something about what Justin talked about. Um, we, I think what, what Willow has provided us this year is just a reaffirmation that there's a lot of work to be done self-awareness-wise. But I think it's been very helpful, we've done a couple of things outside of the Willow training over the last year. Um, both identifying students with mental health needs and have a, we have a process in place so that if a kid, the student is feeling, you know, in a bad spot, we really have a nice system now in place, we have a, a process in place that only involves the people that need to be involved. And the same with staff, if the staff has a concern, a personal issue that they do, we have a process that we go through, and I think that's, that's been part of this that we, what we realized is that, um, we do have to have a systems approach for a lot of these things, and that's, so that's kind of what we're doing, and this is just another affirmation. What I've seen for me, um, is that, or maybe what we haven't seen, which is kind of hard to measure sometimes, is I don't have staff openly arguing and fighting in public. Um, not that that was ever a serious problem, but it just, one of those things that I think that's gone away because I think people have recognized that, um, if they're not feeling, they're in a bad spot, they're not feeling good, the best thing to say is, you know what, I'm just not prepared to talk about this right now. Let's go and talk about it tomorrow, let's go talk about it later, let's go on Monday, and, and, and I take that approach with a lot of people, a lot of kids. I mean, I had a couple of kids in my house on Thursday, I just said, you know what, I'm just not ready to talk to you about this right now. Because it's like the third time the same thing has happened, and I just said, you're, you're just gonna sit here for a little bit, I'm gonna do some work, I'm gonna talk to a teacher, you know, then I'm gonna come back and we're gonna have a conversation. So I think part of that is just being self-aware of, when you are below the line, that maybe there's time, that's not a good time to make decisions. But I think that's, that's been part of this that, that Willow has shared and that I think a lot of people, what I always measure it by is, people walk away and go, oh, I learned something today. Right? I mean, that's, a lot of PD is, you know, one more PD, but people have been looking forward to when Willow does come because I think it does make them think about things that they're doing in their life, mistakes they made, and she's very open about, you know, she said one of her best friends, I think it was a high school friend or college friend, came up for one time and said, look, I can't be your friend anymore, cause you're just mean to people. And she, and it was kind of a aha moment for her, you know, she used to tease people and was sarcastic and that in her mind wasn't being mean, but it was, just was always, you know, kind of bitter and sarcastic about things. And she thought it was being in a positive way, that basically she was losing friends sort of, sort of thing, so those kinds of things, I think, have been helpful with people, go, oh, well, I can be like that, I, I've seen myself do that, or I, I know when I can be like that. You know, even if it's a figure of positive person, you still have these ones, not always positive, so that's what I, that's what I've seen from my end. And so, I, but we got a lot going on at school, uh, had parent teacher conferences last week. Obviously, elementary is almost, you know, always very well attended, but I hear from high school that they also get very good attendance at their parent teacher conferences, which is unusual from my background in terms of other high schools I've worked with, that's not always the case. Um, we have our first ever PBIS celebration tomorrow morning, it's run by the student council. So our student council kids are doing the, the PBIS celebration tomorrow morning, so we'll see how that goes. They had a lot of questions, but, uh, it's okay. I had to get a box, I had to get a box of balloons today, you know, you know, I need balloons, oh, okay, well, that's, you don't wait for the last minute, but we do that, so we'll get it. Uh, Read Across America, Dr. Seuss Week is next week, we got some things planned, uh, we have a hat day, pajama day, we have a book parade. Um, I think on Thursday, Cat in the Hat may make his annual appearance, we'll, you know, see if he costs him still, costs him still in storage, so we'll be good. And our second annual spelling bee is on Friday morning. So we'll have that, uh, that was a big hit last year, and, uh, Danny Shone runs that, and, uh, we've had the preliminary rounds and now we have finals on Friday for those who made it to the next, next round, and last year we had, I think, three kids went to the regional spelling, spelling bee, so. The fifth and sixth graders, I would invite you all, March eighth, five o'clock, the auditorium, they're doing their spring concert, and they're kind of adding a show choir, not kind of, they are, adding a show choir element to it this year, so there's little dance moves going on, little rock and roll. Uh, Gary, you know, I'll, I'll just put us in the same category, so tutti-frutti, rock and roll is here to stay, blue suede shoes.
Oh, my gosh.
Surfing USA, some real gold oldies.
That's the best.
I know, right? So, and the kids are, it's amazing, I've been watching and singing. So that's, uh, that's coming up for fifth and sixth grade. Uh, Miss, uh, Bowman from the dance studio has been helping with some, some dance moves, so it's really gonna be fun. Oh, uh, we're also gonna have our talent show again this year, third talent show that we've had. Auditions are coming up in about a month, and that, that's set for April fourteenth for the show. Uh, that's, again, a big hit with kids, that's also That's also one of our PBIS celebrations. Everybody comes and has a good time. And last of all, reading and running will start here, weather permitting, in about six weeks. This is my sixth year of running the reading and running program. I gotta come up with a new color shirt this year, because we run out of, we have a different shirt color every year, so we gotta, we gotta get a new color.
Do you have a checkup every year? Just to make sure you're ready for this, right?
I'm always ready. So it's always fun. We always have a great time. And so, that's all I got for now.
Okay.
Any questions?
No. Sounds like it's a busy time.
And we've had a, we've had a regular guest come over my building since his retirement. And they were reading to our preschoolers.
He can read?
Well.
Oh, he's preschool.
He's preschool. So they don't know whether, they don't know whether he's reading or not.
That's my level.
That's fun. Do you love it?
I hope so.
I did have a teacher come to me one day and say, there's a guy in the building, and I don't know who he is. He's gonna have to be here. I said, no, he has permission. He has, he has authority to be here. So it's.
That's awesome.
But just a little side note on that story. I read a story, and then I make up a story. So every time I present, I have a made-up story about Fuzzy Wuzzy Was a Bear.
Yeah, I bet that they love you.
They like, they like the Fuzzy Wuzzy stories, because they're always different and crazy and foolish. Yeah, I'm having fun. Thank you, Mark. Okay, moving on. Now we're getting to the actual step. School calendar for this coming school year.
I think we did more this year to involve the faculty, because it kind of grew out of our meet and confer meeting, and we had a lot of ideas that we threw at the wall, found what stuck. And so we have the third draft of the calendars ready for board approval now. Could it change between now and next fall? Yeah, potentially could. I'm not gonna rule that out, especially since the Teacher Association said they, when they get to bargaining, they have some other ideas they'd like to shoot at us.
Yeah, right.
So there's possibility something else could change. But it's good to do this calendar way early here in February, because there are people that are already planning ahead for next year. Some people don't plan that far ahead, but some people do. So I'd ask for the board to approve this draft of the calendar.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second?
Okay, Heather.
Discussion, any other discussion?
There's been, yeah, there's, there's been a lot of discussion about this.
In the bargaining?
Collaboration with the BKA has been helpful, to at least understand their concerns about when vacations should and shouldn't be, and what about the snow days? The big complaint I've heard about is, we don't want to be teaching school on the sixth of June.
Right.
Right. But they also took, to try to get out earlier, they took away their President's Day weekend.
Yeah, they did.
And, well, first off, they said, can we make that our, our first snow day? And I said, well, you know, what are the odds they might have snow before February 19? In which case, why even schedule it as a snow day? Why not just?
Make it a day.
Just make it a day. I said, yeah, let's do that. Okay, fine.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion? If not all in favor of approving the calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The motion is carried. Moving on to the school budget and the finance. New money.
Okay, your report on new money is there is none.
Okay, moving on.
Yes. Now, I say that somewhat flippantly, but it's true. We had a large loss in students. We're funded on a per pupil basis, and when the legislature only gives us 3%, we had more than a 3% loss in our student population. Therefore, we have to make, we have to give pay raises for next year. We have to meet the rising costs of everything due to inflation, based upon this year's dollars and no more. And we are not alone in this. If you look through this report, there's a map of the state of Iowa. You see it right there on the screen. And you can see there are a heck of a lot of schools. The legislature feels very good about all the schools that are in beacon blue or dark blue that are getting 3%, or maybe even a little bit more. The suburbs around the border are getting more. But there's a lot of schools that are getting, that are getting by on a lot less, including those schools that are in the bright red.
Right.
That they had the budget guaranteed, but the budget guarantee expires. So they're actually getting cuts in funding for next year if you're a bright red school. Now, what does that translate to? Well, it tells you that, from this chart here, that this is starving out the little schools. This is really, this is what this funding formula is designed to do by the legislature, is to get rid of the little schools.
Yep. Loaded to the 400 students and below.
Yep. If you're, if you have, especially if you have 700 students or below, as we do, why then it's designed to squeeze you out and close you? That's what the legislature wants, which is really kind of preposterous when you think about it. They're sure that it's gonna save money if we have fewer schools. But as long as they're funding schools on a per pupil basis, does it matter if there's two schools of 800 or one school of 1600?
No. So.
Doesn't matter.
No. Facilities cost the same. You know, you have to double the facilities if you've got 1600 kids versus eight. You know, you gotta double everything.
So much students for a teacher.
Yeah, for a teacher. Staffing.
All right. Anyway, that's, that's what we're dealing with. I just, so I'm bending a little bit as I talk about the fact that we have no money, but so many others have no money either.
Okay, well, that was a non-issue. Moving on. How about the audit report? I have, I see here that it's time to, you should have all have read that, word for word, it's.
Well, you received the oral report last meeting. But the final written report was not ready. It is now ready, but it's unchanged from what was reported orally. But just for my update here, this is, this is our financial condition, and now it's changed. You can see that for a number of years, you had a little bit of, what should I call it? Irregularity instability in your finances. You were headed down, or you were even in the red, or you were spiking back up, only to spike back down again. However, in 2017, the board hired Teresa Greenfield and Elma Martinez.
That was it.
And look at that nice, steady growth. Not spiking up, just a nice, steady growth.
Awesome. Awesome. And if you read the last two pages of the audit report, I always go there first, see if there's any violations, because that's where they was tuck them, tuck them in the last two pages. There were no violations, you know, other than, you know, we don't have enough staff to double check all the checks in the, and the payment of bills for the district, and said we'll always have that problem. But, but, but to be honest, we get no surprises, and it looks good. So do I have a motion to approve the audit report?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Second, motion second. Any other discussion on the audit report? I missed her coming here, because she's a, she's a delightful person, but that's okay.
Well, it was storming last meeting too, so she just came, she came by Zoom last night.
It's all been done with storms on Thursday night.
Yes, you're done.
Yeah. Okay, anything else? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay?
Aye.
Motion carried. Moving on, elementary class size reduction funds.
This is a peremptory thing, and that is to say that we get these funds from the state and Fed, and the board needs to take action annually to approve that we're going to continue to use the money to reduce class size.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Vic, discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion is carried. Moving on. Okay, I understand. Thank you. You stayed here longer than I thought you were.
They just, they just got done, so they're setting up the show choir.
I got you. Moving on, we have the school budget for fiscal year 2024. Proposed publication. Oh, we're getting there.
Well, no.
Forget it.
Yeah, that, that's an old agenda there, I think.
It must be. Let me look at mine. Rest of my agenda. What do you got on your agenda?
Let's see, I think I deleted. Oh, no, I'm sorry. That is, that should be there. I forgot, because I was going to ask the commentary from Ms. Greenfield, who's gotta explain why we don't have the budget to, for the board to publish. And it's not our fault. I know that.
It's the, you want the really long version?
Or you could just say it's the state's fault?
It's the state, counting is hard, and so they didn't. Counting and adding are really hard, and they didn't add all the numbers. No, so the property valuation, due to some law changes, were not correct. They caught it when they calculated the rollback this year. So in order to publish the correct property tax rate, we need to wait until they fix everything. But they have already passed, the legislation is to do the correction. Now, the counties have 14 days from the day that was signed to get all the correct valuations in. And then next month, when we meet, we will actually have the proposed publication for you.
Right, and then the deadline is always April 15th, but.
Typically, it's April 15th, or if that falls on a weekend, on the Monday after. In this case, they have pushed the deadline back to April 30th. So we've got enough time to hold off.
So we will publish in March and approve in April. Instead of, what we usually do is publish in February and approve in March.
We're skipping the budget for proposed publication, because we don't have it.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, the school budget guarantee resolution. Now, we do need to do that.
Yes, this is something we do every year. And in this case, it's more important to do it this year, because we are on the guarantee. The board would have the option not to be on the guarantee if they choose, but that would be detrimental to our organization.
That's awesome. Okay. Do I have a motion on that?
A motion.
Okay, right. Second?
Second.
Second, Sharon? Discussion? It's easy peasy. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay?
I'm sorry, the, the resolution does ask for the roll call.
Oh, well, then, let's do it. Roll call, please.
Sharon Berkman.
Aye.
Gary Berklin.
Yes.
Rich McDaniel.
Aye.
Ryan Meyer.
Yes.
Michelle Murphy.
Aye.
Heather Ridgway. Jim Sutton.
Motion is carried. Okay, jobs posting and hiring plan. Okay, let's hear about that proposal.
Okay, well, I brought this to the board's attention in January, and the board said, let's sit on this for another month. We said, we try to see what kind of applications we're going to get, and the answer is, we're not getting applications. We have had one applicant for, for the shop class, the industrial technology class. We offered the job. That person turned it down. We have no other applicants. We have not, no applicants for secondary special education. We had one applicant for high school science. That person would not answer her emails or answer our telephone calls. We assume she's got something else going on. But that's the situation we're in right now. Now, I know the board's got some trepidation about the cost of this, and what this, how this is gonna affect other people in our organization, and it is true. We have already heard it about somebody grousing about saying, well, when do I get my bonus? And so that, that talk is out there. We do not have to do industrial technology. We have some other alternatives, whether that is signing up for the Industrial Tech Program in Eagle Grove, which unfortunately may be going away, because there's a new president at Fort Dodge Community College, Iowa Central Community College. And apparently, he does not support the Eagle Grove Center. So, but hopefully, we will get to a point where we have a center in Sheffield that we could be a part of. So we've, we've got that means of making up that class. The only bad side is, we've got a well-equipped shop. That's why we're gonna be sitting empty. And as far as special ed, we can continue to advertise, but we do have some other possible ways we could staff that. Less than ideal, but there are some possibilities. But, golly, I think we need a science teacher.
Oh, my God, yes.
So I'm gonna ask the board only to approve me reposting and advertising that science position with a $5,000 signing bonus. That's my request from the board.
Okay, is there any speculation on how long he has to stay here?
We discussed it. We discussed that last time. Gary had an idea as far as.
Yeah, we did talk about it.
Not doing it all at once.
Right.
Over the several years.
So let's get to the motion in a second, so we.
I'll make the motion early. Well, do we have?
I think it ought to be in the motion.
Yeah.
Okay. So let's discuss how we might want to advance such a motion. I would think minimum of three years. Payable over three years. You know, if we're gonna give them $5,000, it would be, you know, $1,500, $1,500, and then the last $2,000 and $3,000. That way, at least we have it for three years. And frankly, $5,000 to get a science teacher for three years. If that will do it, that's wonderful. I'm not sure it will, but it's worth a shot. Does that make sense, Dr. Smith? Yeah, now, what about the flip side of it? What about our other staff? How upset are they gonna be? They're gonna be upset, because hey, you know, if I was in one of those critical moments, I wasn't, my bonus didn't come my way. I've been here the three years, give me my five. I mean. But five years, but three years ago, we were in a different position. And we have, we're talking about some critical kinds of staffing pieces.
Because what's the flip side of this if we don't have science teacher? What happens?
Well, it's, it's required by law.
That's what I'm saying.
Right, and we have to have science.
I, that's my point. I asked the question, so I get the answer like that. So it's, we need it.
Right, exactly.
There's no getting around it.
Okay. So, when I got hired in this community for my job, right now, I didn't get a bonus. I mean, there was no sign-on bonus, there was nothing.
Right.
And, and everybody's in this, I don't care what your field is, you're in this problem hiring people. Everybody's doing bonuses in here. I've been trying to push for bonuses for my department to try to hire, even though I didn't get one. I understand I didn't get one. Am I a little irritated if I have to give someone? But that's what we can, I found out lately that you can't just go out and advertise anymore for employees. I read an article that says the younger generations, they put their stuff out there on Indeed or wherever it is on the boards and expect the employers to find them and contact them and say, "Hey, will you please apply for our position?" That's what they're expecting. So, advertising alone isn't enough. You know, and my eyes are about buggy from looking at resumes over the last several weeks trying to get for me. So, if a hiring bonus will help, I don't have a problem with it. I don't have a problem talking with any of the employees that might be upset because they didn't get one five years ago when they came here or two years ago when they came here, you know? Because if we don't have our core satisfied, we won't be accredited and nobody will have jobs.
That's right.
That's what I was getting at.
And also-
So, I mean, I, I, you know, is, do I think it's wrong that we have to do this? Yes, I do. But that's where we're at in society.
Well, the pandemic really had a lot to do with that.
It, we, it was a struggle before the pandemic.
Really ruined a lot of people for wanting to work.
Every, even before the pandemic, generally, in most jobs or in this area of the world, everybody that wanted a job had a job. And all we were doing, whether it was teachers or any business, you were stealing employees from somebody else to you because you got a little better benefits, a little better pay, a little better schedule, whatever. So, those employees were just moving from industry to industry or profession to profession because of that. And now, we've run out of that. And we're stuck. This can help get us a couple of people that might actually do more than just apply and then not answer phone calls?
Yeah.
Well, I, I'm just, my, my only struggle I'm having, Gary, is, is $5,000. That's not a huge amount of money. Putting it over three years, I mean, you know, that's very little money each year as an incentive. I don't agree with giving the whole $5,000 upfront. Police departments aren't doing that. They're splitting it up over, you basically get a third of it in your probationary period, which for most police to work, six months. It's usually over a full year to two years is what they're doing with it instead of going out. But I can see three, you know, helps a little bit with moving expenses if you have those. Or travel expenses if you're going to stay where you are.
Over two years, what request, but they stayed for three?
Well, absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
I know what you're saying. But I know teachers are a little different with probationary periods and everything than we are. So, that, I know that's why Gary's coming up.
Yeah.
Is, is five kind of sta, I haven't looked into the school stuff, teacher stuff. I mean, it's probably happening there too. Is five kind of standard with this one?
Yeah, I don't know if there is a standard necessarily. I, this is an example. I've got a good friend, the superintendent of Marshalltown, and that's what he's doing. I, I talked about it. It's up there on the screen. Those are the, he specifically pulled out ten jobs there and said, "We're going to give $5,000. Any of those come over."
Okay.
I, I did not ask exactly how he's paying out that fine.
That seems to be the norm I'm seeing, whether it's in other, you know, business, law enforcement, whatever. Five seems to be the most common. There are some now that I'm seeing that are up to ten. They're offering ten. But, well, if we want to hire them, maybe offer twenty. We might as well just offer double the salary. I wish we could double the salary on all of our staff.
And there are some schools out there, because you can't hire industrial tech. Johnston doesn't bring them in at $40,000. They bring them in at 65. I mean, other teachers start at 45, but in Johnston, the industrial tech starts at 65. Because the need is greater. Or it's because they can't get more. Now, there are some dangers there. When you do that kind of thing, there are a lot more men in math and science than there are women. Lot more men in industrial technology. And if all of a sudden, all your men are getting the high salaries, and you understand they're getting them because these are the shortage areas, but that doesn't matter from an equal employment opportunity standpoint.
Well, there are statistics. It doesn't matter. They don't dig that deep into it.
So, it's a tricky area when you get into these kinds of-
I, I honestly, I do, I do like the five extended over three years. But I think we need to put in there is, they get it at the end of each year?
Yeah.
But they, how much do they get upfront?
They don't get anything upfront.
Nothing upfront?
You split the year, you get your first fifteen hundred. For the second year, you get your first four.
Well, I would say one thing, though, and that is that when a teacher starts mid-August, they have to be here August fourteenth. They don't get a paycheck until September twentieth.
That's true. It's a good point.
That's why I was thinking maybe that first third at the start of their first year. And then the others are at the end of the second, third year. Because if they look at it as, oh, you can get a third of it until after the first full year, eh, no, I'm going to a different school.
And it may help with the moving expenses or any other expenses they have. Can you, I know my first teaching job, I went to the bank, put my car up as collateral and borrowed money so I could pay my first month's rent. Then I spent the rest of my first year teaching, paying back the loan to get started in teaching.
Not a good thing. Well, I just wish, you know, you heard Justin and I talking about the environment for teaching in general. And, I mean, he made a comment that I, I, I assumed was talking about the fact that wanting to be a teacher is not necessarily what everybody expects you to be doing in the state of Iowa anymore. And the, the atmosphere we get from our legislators is not very positive for, for teaching. And I guess my, I, I don't, you guys formulated the way you wish. I, I just, I don't want to think I got snookered. You know, because we offered some bonus and that somehow somebody took advantage of it because they left it mid-year. Now, you got to consume to get your money back. I, I don't want to be in that business.
No, you can't. You won't be successful, do you think?
Well, no.
You just, you'd, you'd have to write it off.
Now, it's been very rare where I've had a teacher quit mid-year. But we just had that last year.
Yeah, we did. I know. That's why I brought it up. I thought-
Thanks for, thanks for reminding. I was almost over that.
And now, I brought back that image. Right, I understand.
But you know what? All good things here. I hired a great art teacher because of that, because we brought her in early.
I know.
And it's worked out really well.
It was a good thing.
If you were interested in knowing, Marshalltown has it as a $5,000 sign-on bonus with a three-year commitment. But it doesn't say if they pay that out immediately, but it is a three-year commitment.
See, what we do at this, Rick can tell you this, but when we have people that are not certified as a police officer, we will send them down to the academy and we'll spend anywhere from twelve to fourteen thousand dollars to train them so that they can actually be a police officer in Belmont. On the condition that they have to spend three years here. And if they quit after the first year, they still owe us for two-thirds of the cost of their training. But what's going on right now is that the other, the other PDs are just writing a check saying, "Pay Belmont off because we want you that badly. We will pay off your training cost that you owe to Belmont." And so, then we're still without an officer. In other words, these bonus things, I consider that to be kind of a bonus. We're helping people get their education so they can actually do the job that they're hired to do. And it doesn't always work. Well, what do you want? You're the boss. We got, we got five minds on this now. What do you want, what do you want, what do you want this thing to look like?
I think they, Marshalltown wanted, so that's how they wrote it, but then it's up to administration how it's dimmed out, I think.
You're right.
Thank you.
They'll say, "Where's my $5,000 check?" I don't want any bad taste. I don't-
I think you're right. We need to be specific how it's going to be done.
So, everybody knows what the rules are.
Okay, so, I think the first fifteen hundred should be written when they start. And then the second fifteen hundred would be after the second year and the two thousand after the third year.
Five thousand? Is that your motion?
Yes.
Here, I need a second.
I'll second that.
Any, any other discussion? You hear that, Michelle? What'd you think of that?
Got that McKenna?
I, I think that's a good plan. I think the upfront money will entice them a little bit, like you said, for moving fences or whatever it costs them to get started.
Okay. Any other discussion? We worded up. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose name? Motion done. Fast.
I'll repost that tomorrow.
Okay. Board resignation.
She started last.
She's left. Spoilment. She quits, she quits.
She's not here.
She's out the door. Goodbye, Heather. Well, do we have an actual resignation or she actually left?
She just went to the meet, or to the concert.
Is she coming back?
No.
No.
I don't think so. I think she's done for the night.
She left her tablet.
Oh, she, her tablet's here.
Yeah.
Well, let's get that off.
But she left it for Trish. She left the tablet for Trish.
Oh, that's right. It belongs to the school district.
Yeah.
I don't think she's coming back. She didn't take her plaque, placard either.
Heather, uh, can you, next, Heather?
I can.
Okay. Do you have her number?
Yeah. I do too.
Let's move on with the discussion. We'll come back to that, if that's okay.
Okay. As far as discussing the, filling the vacancy?
Yes.
Okay, as I read this, it doesn't really make it clear where you appoint. But I'm a, my interpretation is you could potentially appoint, and then if somebody filed a petition, you could unemploy. But it seems to me the thing to do is to, for the board to accept the resignation. And in accepting the resignation, part of the motion is to post this job in the paper next Wednesday. And then it's got to, and then you have to give fourteen days since the publication for people to file objection about the board's intention to appoint this position individual. At which point, then the board could come back and appoint this. So, I'm suggesting maybe the motion could include a special board meeting in twenty-one days. At which point, the board could, however, it's, we're meeting here the twenty-third of February, actually. You've got to appoint within thirty days. And from the twenty-third of February to the twenty-third of March is actually twenty-eight days. So, actually, we're doing that.
Let me give you a suggestion. We've done this with city council before and the rules say.
Okay.
And what we've done is we've actually had a motion to appoint and appointed the person subject to the rules under section two seventy-nine point six.
Good.
And then, we, we simply published the notice of the intent of this district to appoint that individual to serve in the board. And then, if they have the reason that they want to file an objection and want an, an actual election, they can do so. And they filed that with, I think.
Correct.
And, and so, what we don't, we've got the appointment completed. Unless someone actually files something with McKenna saying, "I do not want, I do not want to have this person appointed. I'd rather have an election to fill this spot."
But doesn't there have to be signatures to back that? I mean-
Oh, yes. We're talking-
One person can't.
Yeah, it's a petition with so many signatures.
Right.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's like ten percent.
Okay.
I can't remember what this is.
About what we have to have to run, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's ten percent.
Hundred, hundred, hundred vote, hundred names or thirty percent of the number of voters in the last election.
Okay, and, and I've never seen, rarely do people actually, unless you've got some, somebody that you appoint that's really, people don't like very much. I would suggest that we would actually move to appoint somebody if we're willing. Once we've got a resignation to accept, okay? Then I think we, if we're ready and you're willing to appoint somebody, we make a motion of second and appoint that person subject to the rules of Bible code section two seventy-nine point six. And state it that way. And then, put the notice in the paper. And after the time expires, if there's no one that files with McKenna, we're good. That's what I would suggest.
And then to finish the term.
To finish, oh, it's only to finish the term?
That's right.
Actually, is it to finish the term or to the next regular election?
Is that the same?
And it's for her, it's the same?
No. Not the next regular, she, she wouldn't be up at the next regular election.
I am. Ryan is.
Yeah, you and I are.
Spencer is.
Yeah, yeah. Look at the term of the seat to be filled by twenty. The person appointed to fill it will hold the office until successor is elected at the next regular or special election. So, they would only fill out until the next election, which is, makes sense? I mean, that's what it says here, and I think that's right.
Yeah, it's the quickest and easiest way to do this, I think.
Right, but we need-
Do we have someone that will point?
Yeah, we, I believe we do. I mean, there, there's, somebody's going to make a report here a little bit. But once we have a resignation.
Did you get a hold of her?
I haven't seen a response, so I, I wasn't sure if she even saw my message.
She put her phone on silent.
So, she actually resigned?
Well,
She did?
Been very open that she's resigning this meeting.
Yeah, I know. But has she moved yet?
They're on the last, I'm messaging CK and she said they're on the last song. We should be able to get everything.
What was that up there? You can't talk about some of them who are not here? And then, you can't say who we're talking about? Yeah, it's only two out of the three.
Well, but, but, I'm not talking anything negative about any of them.
No, just the way, the way she stormed out of here and said, "I quit."
Yeah, it's time to eat. Yeah, we're taking a break for a snack.
Glass on the floor.
Glass on you. They refilled the, the cracker bar.
No, they didn't. That red cheese is really good.
That is, and that's got a good flavor. Yeah, go for it. It's good.
Of course, I like strong.
Strongly with cream. I'm about ready to go to eat.
I can eat chocolate cheese right out of the shell.
Okay, I'm having it in the ass.
Oh, wow. That's pretty cool. Hey, who are we saving this? Well, that's Michelle's. You can't eat that.
Well, I'm going to go over and eat it so she can see me eating.
Okay.
Where's she at?
She's in Carolina someplace.
I'm in Virginia.
Oh, Virginia.
You can hear us.
Chocolate, Michelle.
When I landed today, it was seventy-seven degrees.
Whoa.
Well, it was six degrees on my way into town.
It's supposed to be six below tonight.
My wife's playing as we speak to Phoenix. He was his sister. And I have like sixty tomorrow.
I texted a friend of mine that's out in Kansas. Been in Arizona all winter. Well, she worries though. It's winter. He's been going up there for twenty years. It's nice to you, but we don't have a really nice year either.
Life is pretty tough everywhere.
It's a constant turn, you know?
Yeah, yeah, it's a turn.
I'm not sure. I'm willing to try.
Charcuterie.
I've been here.
Charcuterie.
Good for you.
Well, you know, I've said that many times, I'm all of the two of us.
Heather is on her way.
Oh.
Really struggling higher.
Well, that's true too.
Oh, true.
Yeah, you're right there.
Everybody's struggling.
You're right there.
Heather's on it. Do you think the kids like that too?
I do. I think they commented and they just, yeah.
I like the sound of the-
They're pretty tickled.
That shell cast you can kind of make feel too. Because that's a whole different aspect of it.
Yeah. There are a lot of, um-
You okay?
And to think that I brought two to this.
Um, not to bring, I mean, change the, I don't know. Do we have a subject right now?
No, we're in break.
Can I bring something up? West Hancock put on a thing for, I believe it was their junior class. And they had it set up like in the gymnasium. And they had different sections that they started out with like $300. And they got to choose their job, if they were going to buy a house and how the, kind of like a whole real life type thing. Banks were involved, real estate was involved. It was just kind of a life lesson for these kids, and it really went off well. I don't know if it's something that our school could-
It's a wonderful thing. I've done that before. I've had a role in it last time, but that was a long time ago because it takes a tremendous amount of working to get a counselor that really wants to put in the effort. But she had all the different stations, and then she had people from the community. She had a, like, somebody works at the bank, come in and talk about the mortgages and the rents and so forth like that. My role was, I was Mr. Fun. After they had their entire budget worked out, why then, I would try to convince them they need a really big screen TV or a stereo or something like that. And you don't have to pay for the whole thing. I'll slot you on time. And I just, my job was just to blow their budget out of the-
They had a certain station that they had to go and draw a card.
Yeah, yeah, that's part of it too.
One of them was the dog chewed up your brand-new basketball shoes of $75. You need a new pair, you know, or something fun too, but I thought it was just really kind of a neat program.
Second prize in a beauty contest, $10.
Uh, West Hancock.
That's cool.
Okay, we got Heather back.
Heather?
Yeah.
Thank you for returning.
Yes.
I understand you-
I had a lot of messages. I'm like, oh, I apologize.
Well, and we were last, the one last one you answered. Okay.
No, 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 to come back.
Yes, we-
You all right? Yes.
We figured out that we were ready to, to actually appoint somebody to fill your vacancy, but we don't have a resignation from you.
I resigned.
Hey, I have, I need a motion to accept that resignation quick before she changes her mind.
I don't want to, but I will.
Second?
I'll second.
Well, it's with great trepidation that we see you. We'll be happy for you.
Yeah.
I'm glad for you and your, your husband.
That's the only reason.
Yeah.
And then, she's moving on to better things in her life. And, I mean, I always tell everybody, even my officers, the one that's just leaving now, that unexpectedly, your family comes first above everything else in life.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely didn't see this. I don't know if I can say, can I say something? I did not see this coming when I, when, when the public elected me and when I ran. So, I apologize to put you guys in a position that stinks, kind of. And I apologize to the towns that, that voted me in this position because when I moved back to Belmont- when I moved back to Belmont, seven years ago, I didn't see myself leaving, so. Five years ago, I don't know, but, uh, I'm excited about moving and new opportunities, and, uh, I thank you guys all, because I've learned so much about how schools are run, and, um, I would greatly encourage anybody that thinks the administration is horrible, or, uh, come and see what goes on behind the scenes, because you don't know a lot of it until you see the side of it, so. That's all.
We've had a great learning curve with you too, you know, honestly. It has been a pleasure to serve with you, for me.
Likewise.
And you, you two have, have been fully willing to share, when you said, "I learned a lot." And I learned that this is not what people do, or should do. And, and that's rewarding to know that the process of becoming a board member is an evolution. And people do learn, and you were quick study, and you learn quickly and well, and I do appreciate you being here. So. Any other comments before we vote? Okay, all in favor of accepting Heather's resignation, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion is carried.
I'd like to.
Good luck. I'll see you in church.
Can I go now?
You may go now.
Now I think you're done.
Okay.
See, Miss Mike's out there. I could tell her to come in, and she couldn't. She was just up the.
Yeah, she's, she thinks we're messing up the food.
I mean, I see you guys got second help.
Yeah, we did, Heather.
I know you resigned, but you can still.
I'm good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you again.
Thanks, Heather.
Okay. Uh, somebody was gonna have a report on somebody that we had talked about that, that had run for this office once before, and had served on this board once before, and wanting to know whether or not they had an interest in serving again. And somebody talked to Mark, who did.
Oh, I talked to him. I didn't know I was supposed to do a report.
You're on the board, baby.
He never told me I had to do a report. So, yes, I did reach out to, and he was, um, second in votes for that seat too, also in the last election, or third, that was open, wasn't it?
Two out of the three.
Yes, and, and I did call Mark, talked to Mark, and he is more than willing to come back and fill that seat. He was very excited. He, he was actually excited for us to actually reach out to him, so. He was, he was more than, basically, he told me, I'm paraphrasing, but if I didn't want the seat, I wouldn't have run. So, he's willing to take the seat back.
Well, and this seat, this term is really just a nine-month term until the next election.
Right.
Which means he would come in as somebody fully trained for the office.
Yes.
For a short, for the short term.
Do we have a motion?
I'm in. Go ahead.
So moved.
I'll second.
We're Mark selecting, right?
Yes.
Second for you, Ron.
Yep.
Any other discussion? I mean, we can go into closed session, but I don't know what for. All in favor of the motion, say aye. According to Iowa code section two seventy-nine point six, with the notice to be published. Say aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion's done. Subject to the code. Moving on. The Hill reports.
McKenna, we will, uh, work tomorrow on how to put that notice ahead. Well. It's an interesting, uh, I put a little, a couple of, uh, legislative reports. Well, actually, did any, I think the next thing on the agenda is the, uh, Day at the Hill. Did anybody actually go to that?
No.
They did not. No, I didn't think so. So I think we've kind of cruised through that right to legislative advocacy. And, uh, advocacy to the state legislature, and I put a couple of things in my report, and, and they are really wrapped up in, uh, the big issue that's pushed, they're pushing the last two weeks is making sure that, that we're not teaching gender awareness education in our elementary schools in school, in Iowa schools. First off, I want to tell you, we're not doing that. Nobody's teaching gender awareness in elementary schools. But we're gonna get law, it looks like, that, to make sure we can't do that. But, uh, the other thing is, they're really into book banning, and Governor Reynolds' rule is, if a book is banned in one school, it needs to be banned statewide. And that apparently may be has some weight. If any one school in the state would ban a book, then it goes away for the entire state. Now, I find this frustrating in that this movement is supposed to be about parental choice. I think we can all support the concept of parental choice, but let's think about that. If a small group of parents advocate for the banning of one book, they get their choice, but it takes the choice away for the whole rest of the state. Isn't that right?
That's right. You under- that's exactly right.
How is that parental choice? It's just parental choice for the people that believe like me.
Yeah. Hey, look at the list of books they want to ban. How many of them have we all read? Patrick and the Rye, for God's sake, The Color Purple, Anne Frank, Diary of a Young Girl. You gotta be kidding me.
Cuckoo Berry Thin.
Yes. Oh, my God, that terrible book, Cuckoo Berry. He was a, he was a.
Well, he hangs out on a raft with a man.
With a black man.
Yeah.
Anne Frank.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
That's history.
Anti-Jews, whole thing. Oh, God. Yes, I understand. Mark, I want to hear what you said to me, just before we started our meeting tonight. Something he just saw today, and it just really blew my mind.
There's a Senate File eighty-five that's been passed, you've subsumed it. Uh, I don't know where it's at, progress wise, but it, um, it would take all of the information off of the DE website and all of the research on what's called the CASL standard, C-A-S-L, which is our social emotional learning stuff. So, basically not letting us use what they've developed to teach our kids about social emotional learning. I don't know where that, I read the bill twice, and I still don't know what it all means, but basically, they're saying all the work that the state of Iowa's done over the last half dozen years, maybe, to, it's now out there, where we can take that and use that as our basis for teaching kids about social emotional learning, which we do every single day. And they're talking about taking that off the website and not letting us use it, so. I don't know. One thing I know for sure, kids need social emotional learning.
You know, let me go back to the book that, 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 I've been thinking about it all during the meeting, which, I haven't looked it up yet, but this is ridiculous. Our kids are dealing with emotional, social issues constantly. And if we don't have the ability to look at the standards on how to deal with that in our school district, what they're basically saying, we want to leave you with nothing. Zero. You don't, you don't have any way to deal with those issues. What have we been trying to do with all of our teaching staff? Hiring nurses, or bringing in nurses, dealing with all the social, emotional issues that we have, that kids come from all over the world to come to school here and go on. Now, back to my real problem with this book banning. I've got to tell you a secret and a sad story. There is a book that's been banned someplace in this country that I read to the little three-year-olds. And it's called A Mooncake for Little Star. Written by, by Lynne Ling, L-I-N-G. And I read it to the kids over in Jacobson a couple of weeks ago. And it's about this mother, who for the celebration of the big moon, you know, it's a, it's a mid-fall of celebration in Asian countries. She made this huge moon, mooncake for her family. And Little Star went to bed, and she kept thinking about that little cake. And so, she got up in the night, and tiptoed over and just see if the mooncake was still there. And it was, and so she just broke off a little piece. And then she heard a noise, and she ate the, ate the piece and ran back and went back to sleep. The next night, she went and did the same thing. And as you see the pictures in this story, the moon comes from full down to a little sliver, and eventually, the final night, she goes in and she eats the rest of the mooncake. And she wakes up the next morning. And her mother says, "Somebody ate the mooncake." And Little Li- Little Star says, "Well, mommy, it was me. It was so tempting, and it was so tasty and so good." And she said, "That's okay. I'll make you another one." And that's the story. I mean, I'm telling you the whole damn story. And, and I can't imagine how anybody would want to ban that book. What is the purpose of banning a little kid's book that is nothing more than about a kid who was tempted to eat the mooncake? And mom makes her another one. What? I'm sorry, folks.
It only takes one person to get it banned, and it's banned for everybody. That's the philosophy in our legislature right now.
I won't admit, I asked each teacher if it was okay if I read the book before I did. I got permission. I got it from the library, for God's sake, the Belmont Public Library. Anyway, I'm sorry. I just, this stuff just gets, I, I won't sleep now. This stuff just gets me so messed up. What's the food? I'm all done.
And if you look back on history, the groups that have banned books in the past are not the groups I would want to be associated with.
Whoa, look what they did in nineteen thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine. They banned any book that wasn't about the rise of the Nazi tradition. Can't happen. You know, if, that's why we have, in most school districts, we have the committee. But if there is a book that's questioned, the committee looks at the book, and they make a decision, and it's fine. It doesn't come to this board. It, it, the committee makes the decision.
At a local level.
At a local level. Not on the governmental level, or the state, for God's sake.
And if there's any parent that comes to us and says, "I don't want my child to read a Diary of Anne Frank,"
Yeah.
We won't ask them to. No. And that's where it should be taken care of.
Right.
Local, as you can get it. And that does not mean that other students shouldn't see it, because that's freedom of speech. That's freedom of expression in the United States.
Oh. My last comment, you know, you give me the floor, baby, I'd go crazy, but. Litter boxes. We have got to get those litter boxes out of the school.
I don't know why.
Somebody's gonna catch them. They're gonna catch us with our litter boxes in the bathroom, so, anyway, enough of that. I. We're like, last thing, we have an agenda for next time. Anything else? About something to get off your heart and mind tonight, now that I've unloaded?
That litter box thing is a good, good subject, though.
Yeah, isn't it?
So, all of this, all of this we're trying to do is all social media. That's, that's all it is. It, it's big hype on social media. Um, it's two sites, extreme right versus extreme left. And the majority of the people in this country are weak. But they're feeding on frenzies.
In that Mark Thompson.
They're feeding on frenzies on both sides. And it's just, it's, it's horrible, it's, and it's embarrassing.
And the funny thing is, I provided Mr. Thompson with plenty of evidence that litter boxes are not in any school in the state of Iowa, and he insisted they were, but he wouldn't tell me because it's a matter of privacy. It's a public school, but yet it, litter boxes are in the restroom are private. That's Mr. Thompson's opinion.
He's wrong. Yes, he is.
People listen to him, though, and that's the problem. How do we get our public, our parents, to be more involved, to know what Belmont Clemmie is? They hear this stuff, and they immediately just associate every school with what they hear on their radio. You just said yourself, "We don't teach that elementary," what was it?
Gender awareness.
Gender awareness nonsense. Now, if I hear my kids getting that, I'm upset too. I don't want that in my school.
By what I've read, and what a little bit I've read about it and stuff, it wasn't in that many schools it was being done anywhere. And the majority of it was teachers on their own, without their administration and stuff, allowing that. It was their own private curriculum they had started in their classroom. And when it was brought to the public, it was stopped.
That's exactly.
So, I don't understand what the big uproar is about it.
Well, and he cited some other things. It's his reason why we need to fund private schools, like there was some teacher that decided all kids in the class would be boys, whether they were boys or girls. And I'm thinking, first off, we have no one like that in Belmont Clemmie. We got no one like that in northern Iowa. And if some, where sometime there was somebody like that, you report it to the administration, and the administration will take care of it. That's how it works.
There would be a greater chance of that type of stuff happening in private schools and public schools.
Exactly.
Interesting point.
Yeah, there's no law.
A lot of what they're trying to fight, that they don't want to happen, all of this, they have no control over in private schools. So they're gonna give our tax money to private schools that can do all this without them saying no, but yet, then we can't give our kids a good ed- grounded education to make information available to them.
I too was disappointed with Mark Thompson, because of so far this year.
I have been too.
But the thing that makes me most disappointed, to be honest with you, is for him to be so disingenuous to say that I took a poll. I took a poll. And most of the people in this district who have no public, private, private school, to which they could take their kids, support taking my public school money and giving it to private schools.
I can't believe he did that.
I don't think he did. I really believe that he.
Because he sat here that night, and we were all.
Yes. Unanimous in that. We were unanimous in that.
Yes.
And that's the way it was. He, he talked to Clarion, and that's where they were, and he talked to Eagle Grove, and that's where they were too. But among that clique that he talked to, that took, he put, put that poll from, that was very heated.
Just remember when he runs against.
Yeah. But we gotta get somebody to run against him. We need another solid conservative Republican. He's even worse.
I know.
Okay, I get it. We've been politic enough tonight.
Yes.
Uh, is there anything else important that we need to cover tonight, other than thoroughly trash the state government? If not, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Yeah.